Yes, sir.
Okay, we're ready to go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you to the Select Four meeting for tonight. What I would ask you to remember is that turn your cellphones off, please, and accept those that need emergency use. Also, that we are limited to public -- I get that, Marcia. We're limited to public comment to three minutes unless we have other races for. Now would you join me in the formal agents, please? The formal agents.
... of the United States of America and the United Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We're going to deviate just a little bit from our agenda for tonight because we have a young man in the audience, Noah. He's associated with the Scouts and he's working on his citizenship badge, so he's going to come forward and discuss items on the board. Noah, would you please come forward right up here? Get right at the podium, please. There you go.
So, just introduce myself.
Your place.
All right, so I'm Noah Ludo. I am associated with the Truth 358 Boy Scouts based out of Barrington, and I'm working towards my citizenship in the community badge. And the requirement I'm working for tonight is attend a town meeting and agree with a debate.
Does anybody have any questions of Noah? Noah, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Good luck on all your badges.
Yes. The next item on the agenda is the Town of Barrington Designation of July as Pocket Recreation Month. No, no. Just getting the copy of this and get over the terrace if you have it. Thank you. Whereas recreation programs are integral part of communities throughout this country, including the Barrington Recreational Department, and whereas our recreation is vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community enriched, and whereas recreational -- excuse me. Whereas recreation program build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services to those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas recreational programs increase a community's economic prosperity through the increased property values, expansion of the local base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our communities, and whereas natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has visited July as Pocket Recreation Month, and whereas Barrington recognizes the benefits derived from recreation resources. Now, therefore, it will be resolved why the Select Four of July is recognized as Pocket Recreation Month in the Town of Barrington. Put this here too, by the way. Thank you. The next items, appointments, we have Mr. Wallace and Phil Auger that come forward. Before we get started on this, I want to read an email that we received from Mr. Auger and from the Conservation Partner Award himself. I am glad it is for the town and not listed as the -- excuse me. The town has been awarded -- no, you have the wrong paper. Anyway, the town was awarded the Partner Award from Selt for the conservation of the town, so I just wanted to say thank you very much for that, and we appreciate it. John, you have -- oh, John has other words?
Hi. Since we're directly on that, I did bring the plaque here we got from Selt. I was at a meeting they had last week and they presented this to me. It's just Conservation Partner Award in recognition of the Town of Barrington for partnering with Selt to conserve critical wildlife habitat and public access at the 1,533-acre Stonehouse Forest and public access and beautiful Isinglass River frontage on the 55-acre Barr property. So that's from the Southeast Land Trust, Selt, and pointed towards the camera, I guess, as well. So, and this will get posted in the planning office, I guess, Marcia says. She's got a spot picked out for it.
Comments from the board?
Very nice.
Thank you.
You've done a lot of work with that, John, so thank you.
Laura's yours, John. Phil.
Okay, and Phil Oger, as you mentioned, is here also. I guess the first item, due to the dress, is, I don't know how you got it listed there, but perhaps the proposed parking lot on that town-owned property at the end of Marsh Road, which we discussed briefly at a couple of meetings now, but Phil can provide the details. And I presume you got the email from him through Suzanne stating the rationale behind it, so take it lightly.
That mic keeps moving. John had to put it way up.
No laughter here. Do you want me to read the part of that email, George, above? Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want me to read the section on the Stonehouse Forest parking, George? I have that read from the email. If you wouldn't mind, just to go through part of that and give a party in the audience the opportunity to understand where we're going.
Okay. So, the recreation plan, Southeast Land Trust is required to put together a recreation plan before it can actually do any improvements on the property specific to trails and that kind of thing. So, the recreation plan's being written now in a draft. In the email, I said it will be available very soon. Well, I just got it a day ago, so the first draft is with us. I think John will have his copy tomorrow if he doesn't have it electronically already. The town has a review process that's part of the conservation easement, and the town is, by the way, an executory interest holder in the conservation easement on the property. In the plan, which I've been part of right along, two small six-to-12-car parking areas are planned directly on the property. One provides access to the northerly half of the property. It's just above the second entrance to Harthside Drive. Do you know where that is? There's a gate there right now. We've scoped that out with our contractor and we'll leave the gate where it is most likely and put the parking just to the left of the gate. Second's on Mary Hill Road. There's a gate there as well. It's not too far south of Marsh Road. It's about a half mile south of it. That one, I think, will require that we move the gate back into the property more because the property, the boundary is, one of the boundaries is right there, and it's a pretty rocky, ledgy site. Both of those are going to be six-to-12 cars. It's fairly typical. Twelve if you're talking about on a Civic, six Cadillacs. So, and we do recognize that we're going to need the OT permitting probably for the Route 9 one and maybe have to go to the planning board. It's way too early to talk about that right now, but anyway, that's what we're planning on, directly on the property. In the plan, when you look at the way the property is laid out, Marsh Road pretty much splits the property in half. It's not exact, but if you think of it that way and you think about the access on Marsh Road, the east side of Marsh Road is developed with a number of houses, though we have gates directly onto Marsh Road. We have no interest in trying to provide access from that end. It really wouldn't be appropriate, but there is an opportunity, if the town would be willing to partner, to put the same, roughly the same size parking area on that .25 acre lot that's owned by the town right at the intersection of Route 9 and Marsh Road. I've looked at that again with the contractor. It would require a culvert nearly close to Route 9, and basically the parking would be right where the house was sited. It's excavated out right now. We could expand that a little bit toward the bounded line, but just plenty of room there to be able to do that. Obviously, we take material and truck and all that. Let's see. We're also in the process, somebody who may have recognized that, in fact, just in the last couple of weeks, in fact, I was over there again today, we're doing a lot of work on the abiding property, Stonehouse Pond. I sort of think of them all as one, but they were acquired at different times. So, as you go into Stonehouse Pond, we've now put in additional parking and a kiosk on the left-hand side as you're driving down there, as well as we've made improvements before that. The state had put stones on one side of the road and accidentally put them on the abuser's property, so we rectified that problem and actually put, just swapped what was being used as fill-over parking on our side, on our ownership on the left side as well. So, quite a bit of additional parking, but there's also better access for emergency vehicles now at Stonehouse Pond. At the last meeting I attended, somebody had asked how far it is by trail to go from that parking area to Marsh Road, and it's about six tenths of a mile. We have a new trail that's connecting the two, and it'll have three new bridges on it. We're also putting a new walking trail, a multi-use recreation trail. So, it's not going to be a snow machine trail on the east side of the pond, but the trail that connects you to Marsh Road is about six tenths of a mile. We'll have a gate there at that, where that meets Marsh Road as well, by the way. That about covers it, I think. Questions?
Currently on the Stonehouse property, you said you added additional parking space. How many parking spaces are now there?
I would say that that's similar, but it's larger than what we'll probably be putting on the Stonehouse Forest lot because we have a better site to put it on. I would say 12 to 18, depending on the size and manage. And you could actually park on the other side of the road there as people always have. But what we've put in is between 12 and 18 cars max.
And the six-to-12 parking area on the Harthside Drive area, is there enough open field there that you could potentially put in 12 to 24 parking spots?
I don't think so. From looking at it with the contractor, it looks like it's going to be a pretty confined space. It's not on Harthside Drive, let's not get those folks nervous. We do have right away from Harthside Drive, it is beyond. We have a gated entrance on our property that has frontage on Route 9 and 202 right there, and it's open for public access now, but there's no real good parking there.
Okay, thank you.
Dan?
Stonehouse Pond. The extra pocket, are you going to follow that one down?
What we haven't put in yet at Stonehouse Pond is a winter parking, which we'll do by November, early December, just hopefully just before the snow. That'll be outside or however you want to think of it. It'll be between Route 9 and the gate. There was a really bad accident there. I don't think it was last one or the one before, maybe, but, and people are there year-round, as you know. So, we want to try to get people off of Route 9. It shouldn't be parked there. So, we're going to put a very limited, again, six-to-12 car lot right there on the left just before the gate. We didn't have time to finish that in the last couple of weeks, but we'll be back in a minute.
Thank you.
And will it be plowed? I hope so, but I don't have plans for that right now. I would guess that somebody in the neighborhood is probably going to take that. Any other questions?
I just want to understand, so of the three parking lots that you've talked about, potentially 42 spots for parking.
I didn't have them up, but I'll trust your man. How's that?
Okay.
My question would be, down the road, if we find that's not enough, and not necessarily Barrington, but outside Barrington, they have something to park lots in to the trail system, and they're following around on the road, would you be amiable to increasing the size of that if we had the time?
The size of what? The parking lot? Which, because you have to be specific which one. It's more the physical limitations of this site. So, I'm pretty sure that if we move the gate back on Mary Hill Road substantially, we'll be able to do a little bit more there. We may not do it initially, but we may be able to expand that. We may be more limited right just north of Harthside Drive. When we start poking around there with machinery, I'll let you know, but as you know, the land is very rocky, very ledgy. It's stuffland. So, we're going to do the best we can to allow that. We've had to do that on other properties that we own before, and we sort of do that as that comes along. We don't like to build them too big right now. We don't like to build them sort of Black Friday before we need it. So, our approach is build them sort of small, medium-sized, and let's see what happens, how the perception is, and then increase the size if we have to.
So, I'm just talking in general, some of the areas, the parking lots we have, they become crowded and they move up to the street and the other side. There are quite a few citizens who enjoy it, and it's just --
And that's what's happening.
And that's why I'm asking you about later on down the road about increasing the size of that.
I'm not opposed to that. We'll just have to, that's to deal with that one, we, you know, we'll cross that.
What are you proposing, because you made a comment about partnering with the town and the town sharing some of the responsibility or some of the cost or something in effect upon Marsh and 9.
Partnering, well, the comment about partnering with, you folks own the property.
Yep.
It's possible that we could pay the whole cost, but you would still own the property. So, we're willing to talk about an arrangement where we might cover the costs and the work and actually do the physical cost, but it's going to require some kind of partnership because you own the fee. We have no interest in, we're not trying to take the property or acquire the property. It's pure land. So, that's what I'm, that's all that I'm thinking.
Have you, yes, have you done studies on other land trust-held properties to see what type of usage expansion has taken place at the one-year, five-year, 10-year mark of these properties?
We haven't studied it, but we own a lot of properties. We own about 27 reservations.
Right.
Our acreage is just under 6,000 acres.
Mm-hmm.
And we have properties all over the place.
So, we don't really have a way to, I mean, I assume in taking over the properties and putting the trails in place and the parking, you've seen increased usage of the areas of all of them, correct?
Yeah, we've gone from zero in many cases to providing the only public access. I mean, there was no public access on many of the properties that we've watered and provided public access to. In fact, a number of the properties that we own were really in bad repair. They, for one reason or another, they were just, you know, there had been issues with what had taken place on the property, so people just didn't go there at least on foot on many of them. But, so, you know, we've got properties that were already great for public access, but some of them weren't. I mean, Stonehouse Pond is an example of a property that's been --
Right, it's been very active, yeah.
-- a long time. It's actually gone by the point where we think that some of the uses are now no longer sustainable, so we're going to be cutting back on some of the uses. We'll be seeing that through the summer, but, you know, it'll still be very heavily traveled, but that's the reason things are going to be allowed. You know, our mission is to protect natural resources and to also provide public recreation to manage the resources, and you get into conflict sometimes with that.
Yeah, that, I'm sure there are certain users, when you cut back on what's allowed there, that will end up disappointed, and I'm just curious if a study has been conducted to see what that will do with the parking and the need for it.
We'll probably know pretty soon at Stonehouse Pond. Some of that stuff is, it's going to have to be studied by when we're going to have to do and see how the actions.
Okay. Can you give us a little summary, throw that a bit more? What do you --
Yeah, we have, if you go in and look at the kiosk, some of it is outlined right there. So, we're going to be closing the trail that hugs the pond on the east side of the pond. We're going to try to limit access beyond the parking area to fishermen and handicapped folks, and we're talking to fishing gear, a lot of other measures that we have to take, but also talking to Barrington Police Department. There are some real issues about things that are going on there that some of us don't want. Our property is closed from dusted on. Fishing game currently doesn't have that policy on their properties. We'll see if they want to change that. Anyway, we'll be enforcing monitoring of that very severely, I think, if we want, just to try to pull it in range on some of the things that are going on.
Sorry, it's just very vague. Like, we're enforcing it severely, but it's really ambiguous.
Well, I hope the police will be partners with us, conservation officer, the hands for fishing game. We'll be putting signage up and we'll be monitoring with cameras, which are starting to happen. Is that, is it explicit inside the bay? Is that, give me what you mean?
Does, it's not really an appealing step, is it, from a standpoint of conservation to me, is it?
Yeah, as I said, that property is by the tipping point, which is, I think, all of us love Stonehouse Pond. We want to see it used, wide and accessible to the public, but there is some uses going on there that I think all of us would find are unacceptable. That's what we're trying to do.
Do you post it there, cameras, there, since you are --
It will actually, these are signs that --
Excuse me, Eddie, I can barely hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was asking if they do have cam, signs posted, they have cameras posted on the property.
And we use trail cameras on a lot of our properties.
So, it comes down to the point of, what would you like from us?
Well, we're, the first part of this is --
I know what you want, but I need you to say it for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, for the record.
Yep.
What we're here to talk about is for you folks to consider use of that .25 acre lot at the intersection of Route 9 and Marsh Road as a part for parking to access Stonehouse Forest.
Okay. If you have anything else, just give us a couple. Let's close the discussion from the board on that piece of property of --
So, I understand that that is an undeveloped road that could potentially connect the Mary Hill end to Route 9, should the town ever choose to, correct?
Classics.
But are we not discussing just the parking at this point? I don't think we've got to the road yet.
Right, but if you give up, if you have them invest in the property and ask the land trust to pay for parking there, even if we retain ownership of it, over time, the usage of land becomes eminent, yeah, eminent domain, and my concern, no, this won't happen.
You can't, you can't acquire eminent domain against a municipality.
Oh, okay.
No, but what happens is, over time, it just becomes the way it is, and then nobody goes back and does it. And also what happens is you get into a scenario where somebody's trying to speak to what the spirit of the board's decision was 15 years ago or 10 years ago, which we've seen in numerous other items that we've gone back on, and the rec was a perfect example of that, that we were trying to look at, a decision that was made a decade before.
All right. Appreciate what's coming. So, what would you like to do? Does everybody feel comfortable with the questions they've asked? All right.
Chairperson Bailey, it seems to me that either we bring forth a vote to allow the parking or we don't, and I have not seen a person on the board choose to bring forth that vote, correct?
That's correct. I'm asking, I'm asking the board right now, what do you want to do? Do you want to grant, or do you want to not grant? That is the point we're at right now. We have that .24 acres, and it's been very eloquent on why and how they're going to use that road, and now it comes down to us. We've asked all the questions. We have to make a decision. Do we give them the .24 acres, or do we say no and have them build the parking lot further down the road and build a little piece of property down there? That's where we're at right now. I, I'm, no, I'm not, I'm asking you to make that decision as to how it's going to go.
I think, I think the lack of board response might indicate that the town would like the land trust to expand their own parking area.
That's kind of where we were before.
Yep. I just want to, now, there's a, we're at the point right now where we're either going to grant it or not grant it. This is where we're at. We're, we're not going to walk away from this, scheduling for the next July meeting or the August meeting. This is what we're going to do. Does anybody want to make a motion, either for or against us giving up that property?
It's my understanding that we don't need a motion if we're choosing not to give up the property, and I don't, I don't think the board is, I don't see a collaborative response to bringing forth that motion, Chair Bailey.
No, that's exactly where it is. Thank you. I'm sorry to do that. You have, the board just not, yeah?
Oh, but didn't he have a second issue, which was the road is a class six road or a class B, a, a trail?
That's right. The next issue is the second paragraph, the little we have here. This last road is a class eight trail. If, if I have any questions on, on, the proposal is that they want to change it from a class six road to a class eight trail, and then put a gate on either end and limit the use of the road, whether it be for regular vehicles or for recreational vehicles. Would you like to speak to that before we go?
Yes, I would. So, for folks that don't know, it's, Marsh Road is about two miles in extent. The easterly seven-tenths of a mile roughly is occupied by housing, which I think is The easterly, seven tenths of a mile roughly, is occupied by housing, which I think we spoke about earlier. So, we're really talking about the westerly, approximately 1.3 miles, and those are approximate Our section of the road, I can comment on the rest of the road, but our section of the road where our property lays, which is the vast majority of that 1.3 miles, is, the road is three rods wide. I think that question came up earlier. I don't know about the rest of the road. Just to comment, a couple of comments on why we conserved this property and why we were successful in securing over $3 million to conserve it. And I think a big part of the reason why Barrington residents supported it as strongly as they were, this is the largest unfragmented block of real estate left in Barrington. And by unfragmented, we're talking about no road through it. Marsh Road is in a condition right now, if you've walked out there, it's more of a woods road or a path that doesn't provide any kind of an obstacle to wildlife movement and all the things associated with that. It's a big part of the reason that New Hampshire Fish and Game and the funding that we received supported this. So, upgrading that, and this was again in the email that I sent you folks, upgrading Marsh Road would have considerable permanent negative impacts on those features. I want you to be aware of that. The other thing is, we had our contractor take a look at the road. He's a road agent in Kansas. I just want his opinion on whether it was possible to upgrade some portions of it, and if it was possible, what the cost would be. And folks familiar with it probably have a sense that this would be an extremely expensive road to upgrade. You've got what may be a wide enough right of way, but if you look at where the road was located, it's in many locations, in about the only narrow path that it can be found in. Right to one side or the other, it either drops off excessively, or you've got extreme ledge, huge bowers, those kinds of things. Also requires the crossing of what is now a pretty extensive beaver pond, it's about 250 feet across. We owned that property at that point, except for the road right of way. So, at this point in time, we require a bridge to get across that. So, at any rate, making it a Class A trail, we're talking about that section of it, not the section where there's housing. Different issue. I've helped a lot of towns through this kind of thing. It allows you to legally gate and lock the gates. A Class 6 road allows you to gate but not lock the gates. It's one of those quirks of the Hampshire law. And it also allows the town to seek funding through the grants, trails grants program. It's one of the plus sides of what Class A trails do. Those are my comments on that. Any questions from the board? I have, can you still hear me now?
Yeah.
I hope so. All right. No, I will throw out my question. So, in essence, what you're asking us to do is to support a warrant article that you might put in, changing that to a Class A trail?
We couldn't put it in. You folks could put it in, but-
Yeah, John Wallace and his group, they also could do that. All right. Now, the question is before the board is, are we willing to support the warrant article if it were to come up, so that they would know that we would support that going to a Class A trail, or would we not support it? And that is basically what the question is right now. Please.
Peter, would we just, can I speak to Peter?
Yes, you may, go ahead, please.
Would we discuss this before?
You've got to get closer, please, they have trouble hearing us say what we're doing.
Oh, okay. Would we discuss this before? If I remember right, you did not support changing any roads to trails. And I support you in that comment and decision that you made. So, as far as I'm concerned, I do not support changing the road to a Class A park, oh-
Trail.
Okay. Yes, please, Andy.
And I had a fairly extensive conversation with Rick about that as well. Rick's position is he does not support turning a road into a Class A trail. Anything in that position?
It also occurs to me, Chief Walker, that this may be, since it's the middle of the actual land grant, the area that you may need to get in and access, should you have to borrow that ATV from Stratford in order to help someone that's injured on the property. Am I correct in that assessment?
Yes, certainly. I think that I'll be having further discussion with the folks who are finally funding that because I'm willing to keep considering and the town to provide the appropriate equipment for the fire emergency services, the board, and assist people in making it work.
Thank you.
Any more comments, please? I'd say that I'm going to just have a little poll, because as everybody is aware of, we cannot make a change unless we have a ballot in March. I'm going to ask for those who support it to say aye. I will take the first vote. I do not, I do not support going to a Class A trail.
Nay.
Nay.
Protocol nay.
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 We have five votes to say no, that we can't support that issue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, Kelly. John, do you have something else, please?
I just want to say, I am appalled at this board's selectmen. Just given a conservation partner award to the town from self, for protecting this property, cannot put one iota towards helping it out and making it really happen. This is an appalling behavior.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, John. Moving on to public comments. If you have a public comment, please come up here. If you have a public comment, please come up and state your name and your address, or if you are employed by the town, I appreciate that.
Ted Loto, I live on Marsh Road, seven tenths of a mile, very, very hill road. And I'm also disappointed in the, in the board's look at this whole thing. Seems to me, I know that trail very well, I've walked it hundreds of times, because I live right on it, last house, last property on it. And I watch people use it, and I use it myself. And it turning into a walking trail, instead of having the four-wheel people roar by us after riding through the beaver pond, would be nice to sort of slow that down. That's my only comment. My other question about it is, I've heard nobody mentioned snowmobiles, whether they have access to this area or not. I'm not a snowmobiler myself, but they go by my house, I wave and they wave. So, I support it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. This is your sample public vote. Yes, please.
Good evening, board members. First Georgia, I think your mic is off.
My mic?
I believe so. Or the volume's turned down or something.
It's not getting close enough.
Anyway, it's maybe we're close enough. Anyway, Sam Bodak, 34 Stanley Lane. Unrelated to the previous conversation, just a quick comment for public knowledge. There will be one of the candidates for U.S. Congress in the Barrington Public Library at 6:30 on Wednesday, Naomi Andrews. And she'll be there to meet people, answer questions, talk about her platform. Again, 6:30 this Wednesday, Naomi Andrews, one of the 11 members of the Democratic Party that are running. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment?
Chief Walker, just a couple of quick items. One, I signed the sales and purchase agreement with the ambulance last week. The price was about $3,500 lower than what you folks approved. There was $3,500 allowance for lettering. I asked him if he removed that, if I did the local, the lettering locally. He agreed to that, so I believe that I'm able to have a considerable savings by doing that. The holdup at this point is, I've got to get radios. There's a little bit of a lag time, multi-border. I get the radio set up, he'll get them installed, and we'll take delivery. So, I anticipate somewhere, probably late this month, or the first week of August. Is there any question on that?
No.
Okay. And the other thing I had is, you'll see tonight in Suzanne's paperwork for signatures is our annual UNH dispatch contract, which goes from July 1 to June 30. It's a exact replica of last year's contract. Price didn't go up, even though I called while you did. They chose to hold the price, so it's pretty much business as usual. So, I would appreciate, I just support the side of that, with that setback, with the $12,000 check.
Thank you, Chairman. Is there any other-
Chairman?
Yes, please.
I feel this is ongoing business, and he should be able to set it up, to be a volatile on the agenda, ongoing business, he may have any handy laws.
Who?
The chief, although it's not, he hasn't had any public comment on it. Has an issue so ongoing?
I'm not, please, John.
Yeah, when items come up at the last minute, there's always a tension as to whether we just throw them into my report and add them, or if we bring them up. I emailed you that the contract had come in, that it was the same amount. He was added as a late item to the agenda, but he wanted to speak to it because it's not always clear that department heads will speak every time that the board is considering something. So, he was just advocating for something that's coming up later in the meeting, will be voted later on the agenda.
If everybody will check their emails, you'll see that he sent this to us on the 6th of July. So, I assume that's when the chief received it, so we've had some time on that, so. All right. Any? Move on to staff report? I'm sorry, no, a few of the minutes. We have the minutes here from the 22th, 25th. Is there any comments?
Good job, John, the double rolls.
If there are no comments, I have a motion for acceptance.
So moved.
It's moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second, for a vote?
Aye or aye?
Protocol aye.
Hatch aye.
Steve?
Bailey, aye. It's 4-4 roll for that. A couple of minutes?
Yes.
Moving on, next, the administrative scrutiny's report, please.
There are three items in my report that are not considered later under either new or old business. One is the recommendation of Ann Melville to the Department of Environmental Services for appointment to the Isinglass River Local Advisory Committee. What does the board wish to do?
Make a motion that we support for appointment to the Isinglass River Local Advisory Committee.
I'll second it.
Have a second? Further discussion? Saying none, take a vote?
Aye or aye?
Protocol aye.
Hatch aye.
Aye aye.
Bailey, aye.
Secondly, is that dispatch contract that we just talked about for $12,374, does the board wish to renew for another year?
I'll make a motion to renew the contract for $12,374.
I'll second it. I'll have a vote?
Aye or aye?
Protocol aye.
Hatch aye.
Bailey, aye. Last vote.
And an item that came up late today, there is a nonprofit group that wants to build a handicap ramp for a person in need for a trailer in the trailer park. There'd normally be a $50 building permit fee, the nonprofit is asking us to waive the fee. The building inspector would not be putting a lot of time into inspection on this, so I would recommend that the board waive the building permit fee for the nonprofit that's building the handicap ramp.
So moved?
Second.
Second?
Aye or aye?
Protocol aye.
Hatch aye.
Aye aye.
Bailey, aye. John?
And the rest comes up under other business.
Suzanne, you are up next.
So, I have the form to be signed on the, for Ann Melvin, we just talked about. I want to, I'll date you on the 2017 applications for abatement, except I left my figures back at the office. There were 22 applications that came in as a bulk from Pepperidge Woods, and then there were 12 separate applications that came in from homeowners. And they've all been, they've all been addressed. So, I have abatements number 19 and 20, payroll manifested June 24th, July 1st, and one land use change tax warrant to be signed.
Any questions for the board? Thank you, Suzanne. Just move to old business. Old, old business for the first part is going to be Swain's Road. John, I'm sorry, I was looking for the paperwork.
That's okay. Yeah, the Swain's Road's been in a couple of times to have this discussion, and basically there are four options for the town to consider. One, because it is a Class 6 road, the town could continue to do nothing. Two, was going to town meeting to obtain funding for a betterment assessment. Three, would be going to town meeting to obtain funding to make it a Class 5 road. And four, would be declaring it an emergency lane in which the Board of Selectmen would vote to improve the road for better emergency access as needed to get to the forest parking lot. Those are the four options that the board has. The reason that the residents were saying the town should be contributing more is because of the presence of the town forest with the parking area, the encouraging school groups to go there, conservation, recreation. And that's why they came in to ask for the town to make a greater contribution to the maintenance of the road. I think that's a quick summary of where we're at.
Any comments from the public?
Sure.
A bunch of questions. I'm going to ask you, if that will make this simple.
James Atkins, usually on the river.
Andrews?
Well, I'm going to tell you in a second. I was on the river on 74 Park and Mountain, but now I'm on 220 Swain Road, and I bought the town forest. I know the town forest went in 19 years ago, and this subject came up when the town forest was accepted by the town, and this battle started many years ago. Those have been going on and on and on about the town taking over the road, that's the public town forest. So, I'm intrigued that it's now come forth again. So, all I'm asking is, how did it happen? What has been the discussions? It doesn't have to be paved, it could go to a Class 5 scenic like Cooper Road, state pavement be maintained. The option to have it from an emergency standpoint to get to the town forest, I question that because if you're going to take it to the town forest, you better take it to the end, because you've got residents, same number of houses, past the town forest. So, there's an argument on that side. So, basically, I'm just asking, where does it sit now? Is this just an open discussion, or is the town seriously considering the option set forth that was tonight?
John, one of the other butters down there, whose name escapes me right now, came in in April.
Josh.
Josh? Tried to think of the last name, though. Yeah, I came in.
Earl, Earl Bowe?
Yes, I came in, brought the subject up, asked the board to look into it. So, the town started looking into it, I think, I think it was an April meeting initially. We had the road agent, the engineer, go out and look at it and develop several different cost estimates, just gravel, gravel and pavement, as far as the parking lot or the way to the end. We developed those numbers, we talked with our attorney as to what the options were, which I went over briefly earlier in this meeting. And that's what triggered this discussion again, is one of your neighbors came and asked that we look at it again.
So, on the cost side of things, is there, has there been any cost numbers as to what the town would be thinking on doing? Is it just throwing six inches of gravel on top, or really taking the road? Because if you look at what's been done to that road, it's- Because if you look at what's been done to that road, it's in pretty good shape right now.
Yeah, the numbers were based on bringing it to full town specs with or without pavement, and they were from 400 to 600,000.
So, how does that stand from, I mean, I'll break it out. How's that stand from a legal standpoint? We have accidental houses on there now. The opposite side on Swains Road, the same way. You only have about 1,500 feet of dirt trail, and you've got a throughway. So, my question is, where does this really stand?
There is no legal requirement for us to change the status.
There isn't?
No.
So, if a public town forest, if someone gets hurt in that town forest, and the ambulance can't get to it because the town road's not maintained, where does that put the town?
Well, that would be the reason to consider it for an emergency lane declaration to that point.
Okay, no, I'm fine. I'm just wondering where the town sits right now, because it's been going on for many, many, many years.
Last week, there was, last meeting I should say, there was comments made about the betterment to the road, and everybody was chipping over taking the period, and the majority of the individuals that were here said no, they didn't want to take that cost on. So, that's probably, it should be implemented, we see that, that's where it's at.
The 10-year was, what was that, the residents?
The residents were going to turn around and have the betterment cost set up for them to repay, pay for the betterment road for the next 10 years.
If I may, one of the four legal options that I gave was a betterment assessment, which is that the residents and the town, because we own land there, would each contribute their fair share divided by 10 over a period of 10 years. That needs a town meeting vote, and the general consensus was that was not what they wanted.
Yeah, I don't think that would flow either.
No.
I don't think we'd even be talking about it hadn't been for the town forest 20 years ago. And that's the sad thing that I want to make a point of. The town accepted the property. Boy Scouts went in there, and everyone worked hard to put a town forest in, and then basically the town went, so what? Think about it. You got a public town forest, but you don't want to maintain the road? I think with the number of houses down there now, and the way things are going, it's time to really start spreading out the cost. By the time the public town forest went into now, you spread out the average of what it would cost now, you're getting a super deal in the long run if you bring it up to some travelable public acceptance. Doesn't have to be paved, doesn't have to be no super highway. But, more and more signs, I've noticed that someone's been in there fixing up the town forest, putting new signs up. But, the more and more kids, if you get more public down there, you're gonna have someone get hurt. And if it's in the middle of the winter, snow shelling, I can tell you right now, no one plows that road but us. And if a truck can't get in there to get them, the town's gonna have itself a problem. It's sad that it's come to that, but I seriously think that aspect of it on the emergency side of things really seriously needs to be looked at. Because if you ever have to call on the fire department or the ambulance department in your life, trust me, you're gonna want them there, one way or the other. So, just keep that in mind. Money is one thing, but think about it, you got a public town forest. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh.
Yes.
The next item is Castle Rock.
John, can I make a motion?
Certainly. Motion for what?
The people voted for the town forest, so I'll make a motion for number three, put it on the ballot, to take over, for the people to pay for their upgrades.
On how?
On number three, we can go to town vote to find funding for it. The people accepted the town.
So, you're talking about a betterment assessment?
No, number three.
John, what's number three?
I think I put in the wrong order. In the text, number three was betterment assessment, number two was town meeting for funding a Class 5 road. I actually misread that when I presented. I think you're referring to number two, town meeting for funding, and see if the town will vote to spend the $400,000 for fixing the road.
That's my motion.
Okay. Do we have a second? We have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Let the people talk.
Seeing none, motion doesn't carry. Thank you, Dan.
Can we ask?
John, go ahead.
Can we ask for fire and police to look as well as highway to see if they think there should be an emergency lane declaration and bring us back an opinion on that?
Does anybody in the board object?
Okay.
Next we have is Castle Rock Road Lot. I'm sorry?
Yes, just, well, what the question is, is should, my understanding is, the question we need to ask you and Peter and Bob is, there adequate merit to the proposal to make some kind of an improvement for an emergency lane, either to the town forest or all the way through?
And I think when we look at that going all the way through, you've got to turn around and you've got other issues that you'd have to address. But, I think if you could look at it, we can have a discussion, the three of you and myself in the office, and then you can work on coming up with what your opinion is on that.
No, absolutely, I wouldn't do that. And the reason I wouldn't do that is, you're setting a really bad precedent for every other Class 6 road in this town, if you go and upgrade that all the way to the end beyond town land.
I'm not saying, I'm asking, do you want to find out if there should be an emergency declaration from the emergency services or not?
But, your statement was to do it both ways, from there and all the way to the end. Absolutely not, it should go all the way to the end, it should never go farther than town.
I understand why you're going that direction. I think that may, in fact, be what comes out. But, if you're asking them to see if there should be an emergency declaration, I think they need to look at the whole thing and then come up with what they think should be done.
I'm just gonna say this from an emergency services standpoint, I'm not gonna draw a line in the sand and say I'm only gonna go out, we're only gonna protect this bunch of it. I'll just stay out of the dogfight, you guys can figure it out yourselves. My point is, everybody who lives on that road is entitled to the same emergency services. And if you're gonna, if that's gonna be an emergency services upgrade, in my opinion, I'm gonna look at the whole road to the end of the road and form my opinion based on the very last house on the road. I will not give you folks an opinion to a line in the sand, because that's what's there for the emergency services to make a decision on. We'll make an upgrade at this point, but from this point on, you are your own. I'll say this publicly, emergency services in this town, we've always made every effort to get to every single person that needs our services. We may not get there as quickly as we would like to, because in a snowstorm, or a windstorm, or hurricane, or whatever, things can happen that can precipitate whether we can get to where or not. But, in 40 years that I've been with this fire and where ambulance services and police have always made an effort to get to the people that require our services, that won't change. It may just slow down our ability to get there. But, again, from my perspective, I'm certainly noticed you that if I'm gonna give you an opinion on whether that road becomes an emergency lane, it's gonna be the last house on there.
Thank you, Chief.
Chair Bailey?
Please.
So, just so I'm understanding, and John, you may be able to fill me in on this, but about 47% of the town of Barrington is open conservation land or usable trails, town forest very rural in character, does that sound about right?
It depends upon how you're defining it. If you're defining it to include private land that is in current use but is not in conservation, then you're looking at a number in that range. If you were to look at, you know, if that's what you're saying, is there's a lot of forests in the town.
Right. So, what I'm trying to get at is, it would be, in my mind, setting a precedent, and inappropriate if we began to look at this one situation versus the 47% of the land that is potentially being used by people. And so, as much as it would be wonderful to be able to offer this, it would be inappropriate to offer it and then tell the next Class 6 road, and the next Class 6 road, and the next Class 6 road, especially as we see more and more land being purchased and put into the land trust, so.
Well, if I may, if I may respond, that.
I would like to say that I agree with Tracy on that position.
Yeah, okay.
I think it is a terrible position to ask the board to be in.
Can I explain why I think this one's different? But, go ahead.
Go ahead, John.
No, I think you really went down.
That's why I'm clarifying my motion, because the people voted to accept the town forest, so now we put it back to the people, vote, find it, upgrade it. It has nothing to do with us. The people wanted the town forest back in 2000, now the road needs upgraded, let the people vote, let the people talk.
Well, it may, the fact that we have a town forest in there in which we're encouraging the public to travel to get there creates a different situation. And unlike Rick, for whom you need it perfect, you can't accept better, I think that the, if you could get down as far as the town forest and have a turnaround and have a cloud, that may in fact be an improvement over the current situation. It may not be worth doing, but I mean, that's why I was going to ask, but at this point, I think we may as well not go that route, given the comments on the board.
I'll make the motion again, if they're gonna get a second. Let the people talk. We can put it on the ballot, if they want to.
You can't, you can't.
We can put it on the ballot.
Rules we have for us to do it, you cannot bring the motion back up again until the next meeting.
All right. I'll persist, I'll do it again.
You can do it at the next meeting, Dan, then we'll talk about it again.
Thank you.
That's the way that's, yes, man.
I think the important thing to understand is, in an ideal world, there's many things we'd like to do, Dan. I don't think setting a precedent for this, that costs the town $400,000, is, in my mind, meeting our judicial responsibility to the townspeople. And I think that, I think that's why the reaction from the board is what it is, and if you would like to bring it up at the next meeting, then I'm going to ask anyone watching this YouTube video that feels strongly about it to come forward in public comment session next meeting and discuss that.
John, you, hey, John, you have a comment?
I think one of the misunderstandings of emergency lane is it's not 400,000 for the emergency lane. The emergency lane means the snowplows can go down there and turn around and come back out, you'll put a little more gravel on, you're not bringing it to any standard beyond what's needed to get the emergency vehicles through, which is like the private road standard of 20 feet or thereabouts getting down there. Because I understand that we don't maintain Class 6 roads. You can with an emergency lane declaration.
Right. So, this would be the one Class 6 road in the town of Barrington, we would then begin to maintain. What about all of the other Class 6 roads that have, Richardson's Pond is at the end of pasture hill. Someone could be out there ice skating and breaking an ankle, John. In my opinion, you've set a precedent. In an ideal world, it would be wonderful to do this, and it's not my personal choice. I'm saying from representation of the town, if select person A or wants to bring it up at the next meeting again, and we have a large public response in the comment section, we'll know that maybe we're wrong in this decision, but I think setting the precedent is inappropriate.
But, I just want to be clear, it's not 400,000 to get the emergency lane. That can be much less expensive. John Hawkins has his hand up, George.
I know, I was watching it. John?
In the master plan that was done about 15 or 16 years ago, Swains Road tying all the way through was highlighted as one of the roads that needed to go through because of emergency services and the time it took to service different parts of the town. They had a whole thing about how much public safety would go up to make that connection going through. Now, last year, when the bridge was being worked on on Young Road, I had an inspection out on Swains Road that had another one of Beauty Hill Road. It took me over half an hour, because I had to go all the way down to 125 and back around. So, if anything happened on Young Road, you couldn't get your fire department in one way or another, all of a sudden, you're talking a whole different thing. When you look at the connection of that road to the different points of town as a public safety issue, I think this has way more precedence than all the other Class 6 roads out there, other than maybe what Keith Road comes across, which would be another one that was on that list.
Thank you, John. Peter?
Yeah, just to what John just said, I come up with a whole list of roads back in probably 2001, of roads that are gonna, that would benefit the town if they were put through from the traffic aspect. For anybody that sat on the end of Route 9 at 7 o'clock in the morning, and you're sitting at the fire station, or you can't get out on Beauty Hill, these are things that we have to keep. That's why I wasn't aimed for giving them up to a Class 8 trail. Might not be today, but eight, 10 years from now, you aren't gonna be able to get on 125, and there's four or five roads in this town. If you put them through, it connects the whole town without ever having to go on 125. And my other question, it's just a question, it's, we have the town forest out there, okay? Now, Long Mosh Road, or Mosh Road, or Second Another City, whatever you want to call it, was just bought up by S E L, and we're talking about putting people in parking lots out there. So, are we gonna make that an emergency lane too? I don't see where there's a separation. If you're gonna put people out on one, and you're gonna put people out on the other, why would you do one and not the other? And as you just heard, Long Mosh Road is gonna cost a few dollars.
All the, if I may, all the parking areas are directly off a Class 5 or better road. They're not down a Class 6 road, they're right on a Class 5 road for S E L.
Something like.
Yeah, but your access is gonna be off a Class 5 road.
We've spent enough time on the Swains Road, I'm gonna move on down to.
I want to make one more comment.
I'm sorry, sir, we're moving on. You can do it at the next public comment, we have down the road, you can do that.
Later in this meeting.
Later in the same meeting right here, you can make a comment. So, we move on from Castle Rock, Castle Rock Road Lot. I for one, want to know why that's been put on there?
Yeah, it was asked to come back on, as to what, at the last meeting, it was asked, what are we going to do with the unsold lot after Peter Fredette pulled back his bid? So, he had been the successful bidder. There are three options. One, you can put it out to bid again. Two, you could not put it out to bid. Or, three, you could go back to the second bidder, second highest bidder. The assessment is 27.5, the second high bid was $444. So, it's up to the board to decide which of those three options.
Do we have Tracy?
John, is it possible for us to bring it to the second bidder, but have them pay what the first bidder would have paid?
Yes, you can negotiate.
And then I would make a motion to move that the second bidder pay what the first bidder agreed to, and if that's the case, allow them to take ownership of it.
No, what price was?
1510. A non-buildable lot.
Well, it would be buildable with a huge amount of expenditure on the road.
Exactly.
We have a motion on the table, do I have a second? We have a motion on the table, ask second time, it's like the bidder, do I have a second? Seeing none, motion doesn't carry. So, would you like to let the town continue to own it, not collect tax? Or, do you want to put it out for bidding yet, with a chance they have to collect some taxes?
The only option is to put it out to bid again.
I understand that, but I'm asking.
Make a motion to put it out to bid again.
I'll second that. Do we have discussion?
With the same conditions as last time, I assume.
Just like you, what's it cost us to advertise?
As long as we don't, it does cost us something, because we send letters to everybody on the road, and we normally put it in the paper, which is a couple hundred dollars. So, I would say probably $200 would cover it to go out.
Can we set a minimum price for this?
You could set a minimum price.
The board wants to consider putting a minimum price on this piece of property.
Have you put a minimum price prior to this on any other property? Then, no, I would not like to do that.
That's a question I have to ask. That's a question I have to ask.
I'm kind of on board with the second rate, because I don't, it's like, you know, I don't want to, so, the thing is, I don't like that, this is the problem about having this here, where in a non-public, you can have a discussion about your tactic, your strategy, you don't have that same flexibility right now.
You had a buyer, you had an amount, you accepted, he rescinded, offering it to the second purchaser, but what the first purchaser agreed to seems only fair in the process, or put it out to bid again.
That motion didn't carry.
I understand.
So now we have, we have a motion to go out to bid again.
I have another motion. I'd like to make a motion.
You can't double up.
No, I did, okay. This is another motion. I'd like to make a motion.
You withdrew the others, correct?
No, okay, I withdrew the others?
No.
So there's no motion on the table?
Yes.
I withdraw my second.
Let's sell it to the second bidder for $1 more than what the other person had agreed to pay.
See, I can go along with that, because I can think of the place on Undura, that he get bid, but he was very unhappy with the, okay. He was very unhappy with the price, and the town allowed him to bid minimal, and he got it. So if you used him that way, then to me, you've gotta use everybody else that way. You know, pick and choose.
I'm not sure I understand. Can somebody explain what happened? I want to understand, Don, but.
Was that Phil Burke that you heard? I believe that was the person who came in, they were unhappy on the price, they were, they were in a butter, they was purchasing it, and then, this was before Dan or I were on the board, and then they, but I remember it processing through when we first come on the board.
There was hazardous on the, there was a lot of work that had to be done to remove a building, and trash, and vehicles, and other stuff.
Buildings never moved.
Well, they had to remove the lean-to stuff to it, so that they get down to the core building. That was Phil Burke.
Yes.
Right. The point is, he bid what he bid. It was a fair bid, in his mind, at the time. Now, I was in the hospital at the time, so I don't know why I'm even talking about it. But, anyway, he, he was not happy with what the bid was, which was considerable. So he approached the town and asked to rebid, and he rebid, I forget what it was, but it was minimal.
About half a bridge.
Yeah.
Third.
Twenty-one to seven.
I know it was, it was minimal. And, and he got it. And fine and dandy, it got back on the tax roll. But the point is, with me, I think you've gotta use everybody the same way. This is not using everybody the same way.
So are you essentially proposing to offer it to the second bidder for what they bid?
Or rebid.
Rebid?
Okay.
Do not have a motion. What can I have a motion to do something?
As you said, we've received a motion, but you rescind, you rescinded your motion. So I'll make a motion to put the property, map 224 lot 60, back out of the bid.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second, is ready for the discussion. Seeing as no further discussion, I'll take a vote. Ms. Hager, please.
Cardo Cuppy.
Patrick.
And by.
Bailey. Takes care of that. Moving, moving on, I want to explain something to Mr. Air.
No, I'm not talking.
I'm going to, the reason why you had your hand up, I didn't call you, because you were the second bidder, that's why I didn't call on you.
I was explaining Mr. Phil Burke's situation.
No, I wouldn't, I'm not asking what she was doing, Mr. Phil Burke, I'm just saying why I didn't call on you, sir, that's all I'm telling you. Moving on, we have the UNH dispatch contract, soon to be reviewed.
We already voted down.
Okay. That's it. Is there any other further road business? Seeing as no further discussion, I'll move on to new business. Take care of Ann's salary. We have the 2019 budget policy on salaries, that was up for discussion. John, you have anything, please?
Yes. The ABC made a number of recommend, Advisory Budget Committee made a number of recommendations on the budget process, because in several years ago, the Board of Selectmen would come up with the salary adjustments at the last minute, and that would change all of the budget lines. And the request was that the board set as a goal before September 1st, having decided what the COLA and step was going to be. Is there going to be a step? And is there going to be a COLA? So that as the department heads prepare their budget, that's built in at the beginning, rather than added at the end. So for that reason, I am coming before the board, and I'm requesting and recommending that in this tight economic time with inflation increasing, that we do the 1% COLA and the step, in keeping with what we have done in recent years.
I'm just curious, what is the change? What is the current increase? I'm just looking at it at 1 million, I remember what people receive for standard salary and inflationary increases right now.
The, the inflationary increasing is, is related to a number of things, including interest rates going up, which feeds through the economy, and this trade war, as far as what it's doing for pricing, as well as some of the, the tight economy is resulting in wage increases. I don't know the exact numbers and percentages, but just in general, it's, that, last year, we were fairly close at 1% and a step. This year, I think 1% and a step, we're actually going to be behind what inflation and the rise in wages in New Hampshire is.
No, and I have the link for it, I don't have it, I don't actually have it here. Based off of the salaries in the action in New Hampshire, there is, there is an actual calculator that tells you what the kind of mean, median, mode averages are for salaries for each position within a liker or similar. Have we compared where we're at to that?
No.
So, just from my standpoint, from a business end, that's, that's usually my barometer. That way, you don't be caught up in a situation like the economy is right now, where you're, where you have this real labor shortage, which is causing a massive spike.
Yeah, but they would show the increase in wages that that's causing.
They do, but it's, it's temperate. It's not as, it's not as impactful in the sense that the way the economy is working right now, it happens because then, once it flattens back out, it keeps it on a more level track as opposed to.
Right, but when things were down, they didn't use that, so that they fell behind, because they weren't, you know, the, the prior years weren't carrying forward, so that's, that's what happened. I think Tracy had a question.
Tracy, please.
Thank you, Chair Bailey. So it's been my experience in reviewing a variety of compensation ranges over the course of my career, that basically, you never find yourself ahead of the curve, you generally find yourself behind the curve. I think by providing both the 1% COLA and the steps will be somewhere close to the 3% of what the rest of the world might experience as a cost of living increase. I, it would certainly make the recommendation that we do that before the budget process, and I'm very comfortable that it won't skew any future decline that you might see in wages, only because I've already reviewed the steps that exist for Barrington. So it would be my recommendation that the board approve the 1% COLA and the step prior to the budget process.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
I'll second that. Further discussion?
Just discussion, as we're gonna have to be really mindful budget wise this year, to make sure that we absorb the cost appropriately.
Thank you. Mr. Air?
I'm staying. Cardo Cuppy.
Can I?
Bailey. There is, who is the room one?
There are two other issues, more of which would not be a subject for, for, for tonight, which relates to the grading on a couple of positions. But there is the police collective bargaining that has guaranteed an additional step at the top of the scale at 1.75. And some years, the board does do something for those at the top of the scale, and my suggestion is that the same, that we create a 14th step for the employees who are on step 13, that would be 1.75% higher. And I had estimated that the, there would be 11 employees who would benefit, and the total cost on the budget, not counting roll-ups, was 5,900.
I take comment. Tracy?
So I know one of the projects we're working on is to look at both personnel manual and hopefully to look at these ranges at some point. One of the things that I would recommend, that I have seen in use in the private sector, is that for the employees that you retain halfway through the year, you provide a one-time payment of a retention bonus, equivalent to half of that 1.75% of their base salary, and then another six months later, should you have retained those employees, another half of that 1.75%.
You mean, is this going back to the, is this talking about the top of the scale?
These are employees that have hit the top of the scale.
Yes, okay, so that they get half, half, they can get half April 1st and the other half October 1st, is how we split the year.
As a retention bonus, as opposed to, when you, when you add that step and you add this to the base salary, you're also then increasing all other costs. And certainly, long-term employees are valuable employees, but there are ways that you can compensate them without adding to all of the additional costs, and this is one approach you may consider taking.
So, so April 1st, they get half of 1.75%, and then the remainder of that would come on October 1st.
And that would apply to base salaries?
Yep. On the base.
If Tracy makes that as a motion, I will second that.
I'll make that as a motion.
And I will second it.
Second, further discussion? Take a vote, Dan?
I'm staying.
You say?
Cardo Cuppy.
Patrick.
I did the first one.
Bailey and I, motion carries.
Okay.
Any further discussion on that? Moving forward, we have the NHMA policy recommendations. As you all know, we have that in your folder to go there, and I would like to ask, if we can take this in groups, on page 7, ahead of us, I'd like to take the first one, is action policy recommendations. Does anybody have any objections? Yes, ma'am?
The only, I'm not sure if it was under action policy, so I'm sorry, I've read them all. The only thing that I have, that I would like the board to consider not supporting is, there was something in here about, yes, the appointment of town clerks by the board. I actually prefer that that stay a voted for position.
That, that is a local option, so that unless Barrin, unless the legislature passes it, and Barrington passed it, it would not occur. There are towns, in particular Chata Towns, that would like, the cities are all appointed, they're not elected. So there are some towns that would like to have that ability, so that's why it's in there as a local option. If you would like to oppose it, even as a local option, that's okay too, but I just wanted you to be aware that it was a local option.
No, that's fine. I just, I was under the assumption, if it went forward, then we would be appointing someone, and I think it needs to stay.
We are fortunate, we are fortunate to have a good elected town clerk. I have been in situations where the town clerk was very popular, but was also not very competent, and that situation, the board was aware of and unable to do anything about. So that's, I don't want to identify towns or anything, that was years ago, but the, we're, like I said, Barrington's been fortunate to have had good town clerks.
That was my only policy recommendation. We should explain to the public, since they're not seeing this, what this actually is, John?
Yes. The, the New Hampshire Municipal Association is an organization of almost all the towns in the state. When I say almost, I think it's all but three or four towns and cities in the state. They represent those towns to the legislature on various legislative issues. In the spring of every even year, they, they invite anyone who is interested to come and make policy recommendations, and then they have these committees review them, they go to the board, I sit on the board, and are passed through to the, a September meeting, when every municipality gets one vote. So Manchester gets one vote, Columbia gets one vote, you know, and Barrington gets one vote. So at this policy meeting, then there is a majority vote, do you support these policy recommendations? Now, I've sat on these committees for many years, I wasn't on it this year, because I was traveling, but I would say 80% of these have been on there for quite a number of years. I was joking to somebody or other, one of these I remember typing when I was in Nashua, and it came off that computer in Nashua that I was working on, and it's almost unchanged since then. Some of these, like the elected town clerk, are very unlikely to happen, because there's a strong clerk's lobby against it, and the current Secretary of State is opposed to it. Others are in here to protect the town against loss of revenue, to prevent unfunded mandates going forward. There are some in here that relate to problems that have arisen in either zoning, or planning, or elsewhere, to try to have those addressed. We have one in here on road, on support for bridges, we get 80% on our, we now have three bridges in line for 80%. So we want to make sure we support the funding that goes towards those bridge projects. So, motor vehicles, there is an attempt by the trucking industry to have trailers registered for multiple years out of state, so that they can save money, but of course, that costs every local town the money they would otherwise get on trailer registration. So that the municipal association goes, has a staff of about nine, two of those represent the town at the legislature lobbying. There are two that are lawyers, that we can call for legal advice, and it's free legal advice if you're a member of the association, and we regularly talk with them. There is a finance person up there that really understands not only state finance, but she used to be a DRA, she was an assistant director, and, you know, you can talk to her about anything relating to finance issues. So, the, they do a great deal of training, they offer extensive training for not only so, the, the select persons, but also for planning, zoning, for department heads, for management from a lot of different standards. So, this is one aspect of what the municipal association does, and what is voting tonight is whether or not to recommend these policies at the September meeting. At the September meeting, the chairman would be the one who votes for Barrington, but if he's not there, it would be the vice chairman, Dawn, and if she's not there, it would be one of the other three selectmen, if they were there, and if not, then it would be me, as a town administrator. In the past, about half of the time, I've been the one that's been sent, and the selectman has gone the other half of the time. So, it's really up to the board, but these policies are designed to help protect municipalities' finances, funding, and to, to help deal with the finances, funding, and to help deal with issues that are of municipal interest. Does that answer the question?
Yeah. It's my understanding from reading through them, John, that basically this allows the municipalities to have a voice, so the states can't necessarily implement policy that connects us in an adverse way.
To try to prevent them from doing it.
Very good. Thank you.
We don't always succeed, but they have a pretty good batting average.
Tracy, on your support, do you want to have notation of item 12 for section? Item 12 is the one pertaining to what you discussed.
No, I feel comfortable now after John explained it, that unless specifically the board voted to make that change, it would not occur, so.
The town meeting voted.
The town meeting voted, and thank you.
All right, so we get, I would like a motion to approve section one, general administration and governance.
I take that motion.
That motion, I'll second it. Any further discussion? Have a vote, please.
Air, I. Article five.
Bailey, I. The next item is on page 11. Page 11 is action policy recommendations. I must say, I reviewed them and I would say yes to all of them on the item two fines and revenue. Any other discussion on this, please? Do I have a motion? Please go ahead.
I just did expansion of local authority to institute fees. So that number three. So just when I was reading through, legislation allows municipalities to exercise local control of non-property tax revenue streams with the local legislature lobbying to meet demands for services and infrastructure. Examples of such a decision may include such actions allowing municipalities to adopt an additional surcharge of the motor vehicle tax and hotel occupancy for the municipality, allowing the municipality to increase the maximum occupation fee for transportation improvements, including regular registration fees. The states have existing policy on it, but it's.
Throw it out. Yeah, I would, I would, it's coming from some of the high hotel room type communities who want to enhance their revenue stream rather than the original plan for room and meals tax to be more broadly shared among all the communities, not just those with the hotels. So I assume you're going to pull number three, not recommend number three out of this group, but are there others you don't want to recommend out of this group?
Number three, I didn't, I didn't support. Number four, I really struggled with because it's looking to expand the fines and the penalties on enforcement of registered vehicle vehicles. And I look at that as two-fold. One, sometimes people are just missing, so it does happen. And then the second side of it is, you do have some people who don't legitimately do what they're supposed to do.
This is aimed at people who live in Massachusetts or live in Maine, and they're saving $1,000 on their auto registration and there's only $100 fine, so there's a very little, that's why they want to increase the fine to prevent people that should not be registering their vehicles in New Hampshire doing it.
And look at that as more of a enforcement, just a management and enforcement issue?
Well, it's hard to get people to chase for smaller fines, all these people that are doing it, whereas if you have a larger fine, it reduces the incentive, because if they get caught, there will be significant cost rather than $100.
It kind of ties back with the previous one, though, about adding fees.
It happens particularly in communities with second homes. It happens along the border.
Would entertain a motion not to support finances and revenue?
You mean number four?
Or you could do, just do number three or just flatten it, approve finance and revenue, period.
Oh, no, I think there's a lot of them in here we want, assessing in particular.
How would you like to handle it?
Yeah, right. I mean, I would think you would say, on a consent calendar, you're pulling number three. Are you pulling number four? Leaving number four in?
You want to pull number three, where they're recommending finding people more money if they register illegally in the wrong state?
And live here, and registered vehicles out of state.
You don't want them fined more money if they illegally registered their car in the wrong state?
I just think we should be holding the account, people should be holding.
I think this is doing the reverse. If you pull back on it, handing them, they're not going to increase that $100 fine to $500. You want them to increase the fine. Don't you?
I don't ever want to see fines increased, I just want to see appropriate enforcement action for the municipality.
It's literally almost impossible. You'd have to follow someone home with their car registered and be sure that they actually checked in at night to where they said they lived, so.
Yeah, why don't we give them money to us? Why would we not, we're going to find them because they want to give us money? Why would you do that?
Well.
John, please. So what I'm saying is that, do you want to approve free, I mean, number two fines and revenues written? Or do you want to make the exception as any noted for item three?
I'd like people to potentially incur a higher fine for.
All right, so we won't, then you're not favoring supporting any of item three?
Correct.
All right. So how do you want to go?
I think we're knocking number four at this point. We're on number four.
We're saying we agree on three, we don't agree on four.
Fine probably more than the legislature.
May I suggest an emotion, may I suggest an emotion not to recommend number three on local authority on fees?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Yeah, Amy.
Amy second it?
Air, I.
Any further discussion?
I just want to understand what you folks are voting for. So we're voting on number three, which is the one everybody seemed to agree on, which was to expanding fees on, let them judge their own local hotel rate tax, number three. We're on number three right now. Number three would allow a local community to have their own room and meals tax in addition to the state room and meals tax.
But it also says allowing a municipality to increase the maximum optional fee for transportation improvements when collecting motor vehicle registration fees.
If you call it $5, it would allow the town to go to $10, $15, $20 per registration as additional money.
Okay, and you want to take that off the plate and not allow us to do that?
I.
I'm not proposing we do it, I'm saying you want, once you support this, then you're.
I think the problem with the one as written is that it throws some things in that we don't want along with that one that we might want.
So is a person who came at one point of my life from out of state and watching how states add in all the other fees that do it, it is counterintuitive to the New Hampshire way?
I think exercising local control over tax revenue is very important.
I would agree to an extent, but what happens is you create such a broad base control for local authority that they can jack up anything that they want and start adding to it to the point where you've actually become detrimental to a community. And I can give you some, I can cite some very specific examples with New York State and how they have screwed themselves up in so many ways.
See, also, when you turn around and you allow municipality to take, let's say right now it's 9% for meals tax, and so they say, well, gee, maybe we should get 3%, so they add 3% to it, so that when visitors come in, they'll be paying 12%, we'll get 3% to keep the other, the other 9% back to the state for distribution. I mean, I think that's, it's not a way that we should be doing that.
Chair Bailey, I don't disagree with you. What I'm saying is, don't remove the right to make the decision, and by not supporting this, you're saying, no, no, we don't want to exercise local control over setting non-property tax revenue. And maybe that's your goal, I'm just perplexed by that.
I can understand it. Let's say we go 10 years down the road, none of us sitting on the board, then somebody else comes in and says, wait, here's a pot of gold, let's collect it. You know, what's it going to do for tourism and everything else coming in if they have the authority to do it, but the state doesn't on a manageable point? I think it's excessive, 9% of this beside the point.
Well, let's assume 10 years from now, we have a problem with rabies across the town of Barrington, and you want to increase the fee on dogs, God forbid we do that, but to $20 in order to institute an animal control officer part-time, I think you're limiting yourself when you limit the local control of non-property tax revenue.
I would take it.
Thank you.
Even though I disagree with you, still a very good point.
We got a motion, we got a second.
Can I ask Suzanne to repeat?
Air, I. Article nine. Number three.
The motion is.
To not support.
Not to support, number three.
The local optimization of fees. So I don't support it. Is it a, the way we're voting on it, is it a negative vote or a positive?
You vote yes to not support it. So you're voting yes to not support the as written?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, quarter one? So if we approve to finance and revenue with the exception of.
No, no, we haven't, we haven't voted on the rest yet. Are we pulling number four out or not? Sorry.
The next item we have to consider is enforcement of motor vehicle registration laws. Mr. Nam has talked about not supporting item four on this list, and requires, so we can raise the fine, $100 on it, the registration of 12-year period to the state of Maine municipality, so how do we want it on this? Do we want a lot of control to, yes, ma'am?
I want to be very clear. If you read the explanation, we are losing revenue, right, to states that are above us, we are not gaining revenue, therefore you want to increase the margins for avoidance of registering your vehicle here. So you support this?
I don't think it's an avoidance of registering here, what you're saying is that you register out of state.
Tracy is correct, that it's about specially tracted trailers that are being registered out of state that should be registered in-state, so we're losing revenue.
And so are we saying we're going to chase people who are state-wise?
We're going to chase people who are here, but they're claiming the trailer is registered in Maine for 12 years rather than registering here like it should.
So if we catch them, then they're going to be fined, then they're going to raise the fine, they're going to pay the difference. Then they'll register in the United States.
Three quarters of the country's registered in the state of Maine.
Or else they move out.
Not nearly, you go to, I can't.
This is, again, a really sticky wickie, because, you know, how are you, there's no method to validate.
In all honesty, we'd be the vote, Florida, we don't, we're not going to be the ones chasing them, Dan.
I don't agree with it.
What I'm hearing you say, Chair, select person, that is that you don't feel it's enforceable.
Not only do I not feel it's enforceable, I think the cost and the impact of trying to enforce it is far greater than what they're going at.
Well, I'll give you a simple example. So if my husband's truck, which is registered in the state of New Hampshire, is continually towing a trailer with a boat on it that is registered in the state of Maine, it may come to the attention of the police officer that may or may not pull him over at some point, that they don't match. And I'm thinking if there's a fine for that, and he can say, is this your boat, then potentially it stops my husband, who would never do this and break the law, from registering his boat in a state where he gets to do it cheaper.
So again, how this is, is a person who owns a commercial property in the state of New York, if I wanted to, I would register my stuff through my commercial property in the state of New York, so I could be towing a trailer with a New York state weight and driving a car with a New Hampshire weight, that creates that exact same scenario and is completely legit for every business practical reasonable purpose out there.
Select board, now that we've covered that aspect of it, let's talk about, do we approve or disapprove on number four, please? Do I have a motion to?
I'll make the motion to disapprove of the regulation that's proposed.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Have a vote.
Air, I. Article nine. That way.
Three to two, motion carries. So now, I want to make the motion to approve finance and revenue with the exceptions of items three and four.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Have a vote, please.
Air, I. Article five.
Bailey, I. Now, the next one we're going to just discuss is infrastructure development and land use. That's on page 15.
Yeah, handwritten 15, it's nine on the other.
What is it?
Yeah, it's handwritten 15, because this has so many different pieces put together, because there is a little line down here.
Any changes? Do I have a motion to approve?
I just wanted some clarification on that. On number 15, John, maybe you can just elaborate on this, is it include changes to the calculation of the default budget unless such changes are a local option presented to the legislative body for people? I just missed what they were.
Oh, you're back on finance. That's the finance.
I started, you say 15, so I'm just.
Page 15 on mine is page nine, standing on the bottom.
Yeah, what they're just saying is they don't want to change the definition of default budget unless the local town meeting votes to agree to that.
That's, I just wanted to clarify.
Now we're on the infrastructure.
About the infrastructure's right of way. Just you've had so much conversation around.
This one, this is one of those that go back to my Nashua days, because Nashua wanted to use the fire copper lines for communication on computers, and the telephone company was saying, no, that's not, that's only for fire alarm key, but you can't use it for something else, got into a big fight.
Discussion? Have a motion?
Hold on one second, the regulation on short-term rental. So, can be a date. Yes, I know exactly what this is here to. So the whole including licensing requirements of health and safety protections should not be interpreted to limit existing authority to regulate such systems, this is all important in those regulations. I mean, Airbnb has become like a way for people to rent out their properties, and I know it is a big deal.
It's a big deal in university communities, it's not so big a deal here as it is in communities in which it's being used as a way to get around the zoning. By, you know, nine months of A B and B for a college student or something like that.
Yeah, I haven't seen it done that way, but typically, what, where you see it is, what's happening is through the use of Airbnb, it's actually driving rental costs in hot areas higher, Portsmouth, New York City, like areas, like lake houses, things like that. Yeah, this is about this. Yeah, this is about this.
I'm of the opinion, I highly doubt that somebody who's renting their lake property on Swains or Ayers or someplace else under Airbnb or HomeAway is going to want us to begin to regulate how they handle their properties, so I am not in support of this.
We're in agreement.
We're in agreement.
Hey!
So is there a motion? Motion to pull it out?
Second it.
The motion is seconded.
Here I.
Recommit. Hatch I.
That way.
Bailey I. Now, there were moves... Now, is there any other items you want to take out? Since we're seeing them, I would like to have a motion to approve section three, infrastructure development, land use, with the exception of item four.
I'll make that motion.
Motion seconded. Andy has seconded for the discussion. Seeing now, we have a vote, Mr. Air.
Here I.
Recommit. Hatch I.
That way.
Bailey I. Last item coming up is on page...
That's it? That's all of them?
That's it, I know, that's the next item coming up. Please, it's on page three. So, I do not want to go. Mrs. Hatch, would you like to go?
When is... What date is this?
September fourteenth.
Nine AM.
In Concord.
Personally, I think John's a lot of good people.
Does anybody object? John?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
That takes care of the items on page...
I'm sorry for this meeting, I have now...
No, you're not.
I do it sometimes.
Next item we have is select persons report concerns, Mr. Air.
Conservation, we met, I was at the last meeting. I was late, I missed one thing, bought the parking lot, they talked about the... They brought me up to speed, DuBois and King gave an estimate on the Goodwill Richardson parking lot, and then they finished the other one down Fine Road, and they got a cool hotel for trees, and they hired a tree guy to take down the trees. And then, a concern was brought up, and they said, "Let's out the ever so possible..." They're rebuilding all the power lines, setting new poles up, they're leaving all these nice gravel roads in, and people are going and dumping, dumping private property, because the power lines are private, not public. But they make public service, and they make go down them. So they're asked to ever so soon when they're done doing their maintenance, because they close them back up, keep people out of conservation properties and private properties. Thank you.
There was no recreation commission meeting, however, on July 23rd at 6:00 PM, there will be a dedication of the new town playground that everyone in the public is invited to. I think Chairperson Bailey has proudly agreed to help cut the ribbon with the president of the REC Commission Lisa Alice, and so I hope that we have a nice attendance from the public at 6:00 PM on July 23rd in front of the playground.
It's a beautiful place, Dan, beautiful.
Can I also bring up concerns or respond to concerns?
Certainly you can.
Sure. Someone from the public may point after the last meeting to discuss how we speak sometimes. We tend to move very quickly through our processes here, and that sometimes appears to be extremely abrupt, and we also tend to have very fluid opinions. I think I can speak for the rest of the board, that we all respect each other on this board, and apologize if sometimes we appear to be abrupt or somewhat combative with each other. We do hold each other in the highest regard, and there is a tremendous amount of respect that takes place with each other on this board. People don't always see that behind the scenes, but it is actually how we function.
Thank you for your comments. Mrs. Hatch.
We did not have a meeting, so hopefully we'll have one in July.
Mr. Air.
We have a meeting with plenty more meetings tomorrow, but I would just like to comment on the fact that although I was not here at the last meeting, I had several either watched it or were here that did approach me about some of the places we get it, so I did ask that we should treat each other with the utmost respect in that regard.
Thank you. Any concerns? Besides that?
That's all.
All right. I have one, I have Public Library and Direct Department presenting Steve Corning at Friday at 11:00 AM on the 13th. It's going to be... It's a movie?
I don't know that program.
I don't know that program, but anyway, if you want to go see a good flick, people go there on the 13th at 11:00 AM and see that.
Popcorn?
Popcorn, I don't think it's going to be there. The other item that comes up has to do with the planning board over there in the city of Dover on the Thursday, July 19th, they were having... They have an applicant come in that wants to put a wireless tower in, and so if there's any others here in town that have a problem with it, they can go ahead and go over there to the meeting on Thursday, starts at 7:00 PM. It's going to be in McConnell Center, and go over there for that. The other item is... Yes, please. Yes, ma'am.
Chair Bailey.
Asher.
You might want to add that the property is located on Little Worth Road, Route 9, over by the Crosby Road Industrial Park, just so that they... I don't know that we can see it from here, but that's the location of it.
Yes, ma'am.
Riley Property is a big kind of open space along Route 9 from here in Dover.
Big yellow, connected vines and house.
Okay. Right across from Columbus South.
So if anybody's interested, have your directions, I just brought that up for you to have. I have one last item is the interview questions for the assistant TA we're going to have, so please, if anybody here on the board has questions for that, please turn the questions in either to John or to Suzanne, please. Is there anybody else that has anything on the select... Select persons report of concerns, Dan?
No, I want to comment on that, but I'll do it through the staff.
You have a concern, go ahead, sir.
No, I want the last statement, put down ideas for the new interns, I have a couple, but I'll do it on the computer.
Yeah, then submit it to them, that will be fine. Next, any other comment? Public comment is coming up next. Please remember that it's limited to three minutes, please give your name and address, go from there. Sam, give your thanks.
Thank you, George. Just a clarification on your announcement, thank you for the library blog, Friday the 13th, July 2018, 11:00 AM performance by Steve Corning in the Town Gym. It's a cooperation between the Barrington REC and the Barrington Public Library, REC camp kids and summer reading families are invited to, it's one variety show of juggling comedy and extreme balancing beats, and he's a native from Maine. So, thanks.
Freshness of serve?
What that?
Freshness of ease?
That I can't count on. Just a point of clarification, so, and I appreciate the discussion on the NHMA policy recommendations, so that, if my understanding is correct, that you all are... You all voted on those recommendations, and then those votes go back to NHMA for further discussion?
Yeah, they go back for a vote for a final decision on September 14th, where they get all the towns together, and every town gets a vote, and they'll vote what... Which policies they support.
Gotcha, okay, so it wasn't policy that we're instituting here in town as for providing feedback, okay?
Yes.
Cool. Thanks, George. All right, thanks, John. The only other thing that I was going to ask was, are we able to add another microphone or do George and Amy keep having to do a duet?
Unfortunately, this is all we have, I mean, the system is limited to this number at the price point that we bought.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And on the 13th, George will be showing up, I'm here for the meeting.
As they hand him a juggling...
As long as they don't try to juggle me, yes, Mr. Air, please, sorry.
Daniel A. 3340 Concord Turnpike, NDA 66 Castle Rock, since you're going to read your bid, I was the second bidder, are you going to disclose the estimate that the town in Nares did, so there's no confusion, the condition's going to be the same, so are you going to add the $1.3 million estimate for upgrades of the roads?
That was not a requirement, the requirement was that they have to meet the standards that are outlined in the planning board and the class six road documents, and the turnaround is outlined by the fire chief.
Well, when you read it, I disclosed everything, so there's no...
It's public information that that was the cost for bringing it... Peter, what standard was that bringing it to for 1.2 million? Will, will the school say?
Was that going to be disclosed in the bid? Where you go stack out?
We'll see, if it was, if it was in fact an accurate number for... Was it the number for a class five road, or was it the number for the minimum that they needed, and that's what I'm asking Peter right now, he's looking to see.
So subdivision standards?
It was subdivision standards.
That was which?
Subdivision standards.
Yeah, see, that's a higher standard than we're requiring, but we could put that in to give a ballpark number for the person to understand.
Well, Mr. Boyd asked, so Mr. Frederick, he made it after the fact, because he didn't understand the conditions.
Well, I... We had written down fairly clearly what they were.
Any other public comments? Oh, John, please.
Yeah, I'd like to speak about steps and coal. It's not just me, there's quite other employees that have mentioned this to me before, was our steps are based on our work performance and what we learned and how we're able to do our job better and stuff as we go over time. So to keep tying the steps, which is supposed to be an increase for us with the whole three percent as a cost of living, our cost of living is actually going backwards, because really what we're getting is a one percent cost of living, and the steps were supposed to be something we earned. So, is, over the years, there's been a three percent cost of living increase, but in actuality, we've only been getting one percent, because we earn the step. The step's not part of our cost of living, the coal is the cost of living.
Thank you. Anybody else? Chief?
Just want to clarify for you folks, a comment, that the administrator apparently assumed I didn't understand the difference between a emergency lane and a class five road. My point was, I do understand the difference between them, my point was is that I don't feel it's appropriate to determine that we'll upgrade a road to this person's house, but we won't upgrade it beyond another person's house. That was my comment, John, not whether it should be, as you say, all or nothing, either go to the end of the road or don't do anything, but don't draw a line into sand to determine some residents are entitled something, some are not, that's my point.
And my point was that it wasn't residents, it was the town forest that is unique, because it's the town that has the parking area.
As in emergency lane, an emergency lane should protect everybody that lives on the road, not just as far as the town forest.
Thank you.
I understand that's your position.
Any further public comments, please? Please give your name and...
Dan Atkins, 220 Swain Road. Real quick, where do we leave off on the Swain Road subject? Is it table?
Bring it up next meeting.
Is it table for the next meeting, is that what we're going to do? But is there going to be any more from a town standpoint? Were you looking that way, John?
Were you looking at me, it's all right.
I'm asking the chairman, because I thought we were done at this point.
Okay, so there's no more discussion on Swain Road, it's over.
Mr. Ayers has requested...
I'll bring it back up. I'm just trying to... I'm trying to figure this out.
Mr. Ayers has just requested we put it on for the next meeting, and that's why we'll put it on again for the next meeting.
Okay, that's fair, but is it going to start out the same way with the public showing up and the town having the same approach? That's what I'm trying to find out, are we moving forward on this, or is this...
That's why we're going to discuss it again at the next meeting. Mr. Ayers will lead the discussion on... Excuse me, right here.
What are we at this house?
Swains Road. Mr. Ayers wants to bring it up, we will discuss that.
I'm going to make another motion, if I get a second, I get a second.
No, we have a public comment right now, so...
Yeah, I'm just trying to find out what...
I'm just giving you the answer. We're going to discuss that.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Air, you want to make a motion?
Town has to change the... Go.
I can't, I have to...
I can't get an answer out of any person.
All right. You told I couldn't bring it up, is there any other public comments?
Yeah, let's go.
So the only other ongoing I have to ask is, Chief Walker, how are we doing with the tricestending steering committee?
We will be prepared during the budget process to help get a committee working. I talked to a few people about getting a committee together, but it's our intention to, or at least my intention, to speak with the people and see, maybe put a small one out, pull together to get those...
Understand, thank you. Well, I'm going to ask everybody's consideration to go to non-public session tonight, I would like to go in non-public session for reputation, personnel, land, and legal, we have a few items that have to be covered.
Motion to go to non-public.
Second, Bailey I.
Hatch I.
Recommit.
Here I.
Thank you, we have the votes necessary, thank you. For non-public session, take a five-minute recess.